Morning.
I'd like to welcome you to the Mayor Commission Work Session of March 16, 2020. And the time is now 10:01 a.m. And I think it's appropriate that we start at the request of Madam President with an update on the city's response to coronavirus. So, Madam President, not that it needs any introduction, would you like to introduce this item?
Sure, Mayor, thank you. I did put down a few thoughts on this and as recently as just five minutes ago, hearing from a resident and business owner in the city, I think that obviously, as you mentioned, this is on all of our minds, all of our social media feeds, all of the news stations. And I appreciate the communications that have come out of the administration and your office, Mayor, and I just, you know, want to use this time to talk amongst ourselves and to allow for this group to, you know, take some leadership and take some roles in this planning because while we do have experience and successful experience weathering the storm of hurricanes, I think that this is something unprecedented. And, you know, I just would like to make sure that we have all the opportunity to talk about how we can collaborate amongst inter-agencies throughout the county, throughout the state, throughout the nation, we can coordinate, and then I think most importantly, communicate with our residents and our stakeholders in the city. I'd like to suggest, if we could, consider, you know, taking something out of the playbook of our national models is a citywide coronavirus task force and something that is focused on inter-agency coordination where we can all take an all-hands-on-deck leadership approach. And, you know, I want to hear what we have in place already internally, but I think we need to take also an external look, including things like coordinating healthcare services and accessibility, public safety, communications, our school district and education resources, the senior centers, and of course, business and economic impacts. And so, just wanted to encourage the dialogue as us as all commissioners, while we each have a district that we represent, I really do feel like this is something that is crossing all, of course, it's crossing all borders, and just see how we can take leadership roles in this, that we can take true action, involve our stakeholders, whether it be the merchants, the chamber, different groups, and just, you know, have that conversation here, Mayor.
All right, and I appreciate that. I think we should, the starting point should be, what are we doing? And I know that we've had extensive internal communications going on. We've had Brent Bloomfield, who's kind of been leading the charge with the city facing outward to the various state and federal, as well as county agencies. Might want to hear, is Brent here? He's probably talking to someone now as we speak. But Ms. Johnson, do you want to summarize what it is that we have been doing, the roles that different folks in the administration have been playing?
Yes, good morning, Mayor and members of the commission. You know, we've actually had quite a bit of activities taking place internally. And while Chief Bloomfield is out, I think Chief Matty has been working also in that capacity. So essentially, our role has been in terms of staying on top of what is happening, you know, is coordinating with the county and the various agencies in terms of participating in the meetings that the county has called. We have participated on the briefings that the White House has had, been in contact with representatives from the Department of Health. So as there have been different meetings from various agencies, our staff has plugged into those. We have a number of different groups that are now having meetings. For example, the Florida City and County Management Association is coordinating a conference call meeting for all city managers and administrators. We have Palm Beach County City and County Management Association, who has a conference call scheduled this afternoon at 2:00 for the managers. And I think there are a number of other organizations that are organizing different meetings. So we have been plugged into all of those various meetings. Now, our role has been really to get guidance because we're not on the front line, you know, providing the information on what should be done. So we have been gleaming guidance from the various meetings that we have participated in. And where we have gotten that information from the Department of Health, it's the lead agency here within Palm Beach County, providing the protocol on how you should go about managing this particular pandemic. Then, from a messaging standpoint, our communications director, and you referenced that, has been sending out updates to the public, as well as we have been sending out information from the communications director and the mayor to employees. From an organization standpoint, we had a preparation and response meeting on Friday to talk through various aspects of what should go into a city action plan, that we're going to sit with the mayor and have him review that and give us some guidance and direction on what to include and what should not be included. This is a very fluid situation. So while there may be one standard set this hour, by the end of the day, that changes very rapidly. So we're trying to stay on top of that. At the department level, departments have been asked to identify their employees that they deem to be essential and non-essential in the unfateful event that we get into a full-blown outbreak and have to just really shut down everything. Who can work from home? Who can telecommunicate? How can we keep city operations going? And they are going through that process as well. We're looking at what capability we have from an IT standpoint to be able to have employees plug into our system from home to keep track of operations where we may need to have laptops provided if they do not have the means and they're in a position to work from home. We're looking at supplies. You know, what supplies do we currently have in stock? Trying to get out front with ordering, and as everyone probably can't imagine, ordering supplies is a challenge because supplies have just moved very rapidly. But we have actually put in orders for supplies. So we're trying to stay on top of it, but try to do it in a very organized, systematic way because it's just moving so rapidly and there's so much information coming out. But we're trying to follow the guidance from the agencies that have been deemed the appropriate ones to provide that particular guidance.
And I think the other thing that we have to remember is what the city's particular lane is. I've got a number of emails, maybe you all have as well, prior to last Friday, why aren't you closing the schools? Well, that's not really our call. And so, once the school district did do that, you know, we certainly abided by that. You know, with respect to counseling public events, you know, we were really waiting to kind of see what either the county was saying from the Public Health Department or the state. The governor did put out a statement on that, and so we wanted to act accordingly. What I don't want to do is get ahead of the skis as a city and start making decisions that are really in the bailiwick of whether it's the county, whether it's the school board. But we do take the health of our citizens very, very, very seriously, and we're trying to do what we can internally, or within the boundaries of the city, to protect that. And we'll continue to monitor. Yes, Commissioners, Madam President?
Thank you. And I appreciate that, and I agree. I don't think we should be getting into the decisions of closing schools or things that the county decides on. What I'm suggesting is that, you know, should my colleagues be interested or through the city staff, that we have a framework in place. And I wholeheartedly agree. I do not think we want to, you know, take steps that would cause more issues for other organizations, but you mentioned schools. And I hear a number of schools and programs that are going on where they're preparing meals for the kids and the families who would have had meals at schools. And so, is, do we have someone who is the contact for schools so that we can let our residents know who either don't know about those programs or maybe don't have vehicles to go and to go pick up those meals at those schools? And I'm just trying to think of a framework that we can all take a leadership role in making sure that our residents and our businesses are getting the services that they need and the information that they need. I think that Chief Matty had wanted to say something.
Chief, did you want to?
Yes, sir. If I may. Diana Matty, Fire Chief, this is an opportunity for us to implement the Incident Command System as we've been training our employees on for the past several years, as we do with hurricanes, upgrading the status of the EOC to a Level 3 for monitoring and really starting to focus all of our efforts in one coordinated fashion. And that's how we do it. That's what the Incident Command System is for. We've done it with hurricanes, and this will be something we can very easily flow into at the direction of city administration.
Explain a little bit more about what that would look like.
So what we would do is we have our emergency manager, Brent Bloomfield, who is on a county conference call. They do those every morning at 10:00, so that's why he's not here. And we would enhance the staff at the EOC slightly. And we would start to put an incident action plan together and start to really get, capture all of the things that were, people are suggesting. We can get coordinated information. We can get activity boards uploaded in Web EOC and some of those things like, there's information out there that we're getting from the county that are in digital format that people that have Web EOC access, when we activate the EOC, they can log into and see. And all of those things, Health and Human Services is in there, schools are in there. All of these things are captured, and the county's already doing it. They activated this morning at 7:00 a.m. to a higher level. They went to a Level 2 this morning at 7:00 a.m. So that's one of the things that we can do as the city to take it to the next level. And I think it's important that we're capturing all of these great ideas and preserving these things for the future when it isn't a pandemic and it's a failure of our IT system, or it's any of the other disasters that can occur in our society.
So that would be the Crawford Framework that, as Madam President?
That is exactly how we can do what she's, what Ms. Lambert's suggesting.
Any questions on that?
If I could, Mayor.
Absolutely.
Now, I don't think that framework would include, and you're the resident expert, so please feel free to correct me, but under that framework, you don't pull in, excuse me, outside agencies like the merchants and whatnot. So I don't, I don't know how the merchants would be included in such framework.
I think we can establish a liaison from the city. As, you know, each disaster is going to have its little niches. When we have a hurricane, debris management is a huge component. And we can expand and contract that framework based on what the issue is. We can absolutely establish a liaison or whatever that looks like because it's scalable. We can do whatever we want to do to tailor it to the incident.
All right, well, why don't we, why don't we go ahead and take the steps necessarily to get that activated?
Yes, sir.
And then, what I'd like is for us to, for you or someone from the administration to educate each of the Commissioners on what that looks like, feels like, how they can get a hold of, how they can forward to this command center inquiry, such as how do we, how do parents who don't have transportation, how do they get meals from the school board? And those types of kind of very detailed, very granular inquiries, I want to make sure that we, as administration and the Commissioners, have the ability, have whoever the contact person is, and then if, as they start fielding inquiries from residents in their district, they can know that there is a central location where they could forward those inquiries that will get immediate attention.
We can absolutely accomplish that.
Okay. Commissioner Neary?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm very supportive of that next step. The other piece to this, and one that you started to discuss, Ms. Johnson, is, and ordinarily as a Commissioner, I wouldn't necessarily want to be in the weeds on this, but obviously, this is unprecedented times, is really our 1,600 staff that work for the city and how that both in practice, process, and communication is coming out, understanding that obviously it is a fluid situation. When I think about even some of the clients that I work with and some of the communications that have gone out to staff specifically around PTO and the lack thereof, but not necessarily feeling well, and how we're dealing with that, not from a global standpoint, but really, you know, is that a process of just getting with your immediate supervisor? Do folks have to worry about not being paid if they don't have PTO and aren't feeling well? Those nuances, childcare issues that obviously are among us right now with school being out for the foreseeable future. So not necessarily the details, Ms. Johnson, but is there a plan to communicate that, those types of things? Have they been communicated? Can you talk a little bit about that?
There is a proposed plan. In the meeting that we had on Friday, we got input from the directors. We've also taken a look at what other municipalities within Palm Beach County, you know, are doing in that regard. We have a number of options for the mayor's consideration and plan to sit with him today to walk through that proposed plan. And once he greenlights it, we will then implement it and make the employees aware of it. And we certainly can advise the commission of what that plan includes. So we do have a proposed plan.
Great, and I think that is the practice now that that normally hits the Commissioners' email or somewhere or another. But as you would imagine, these are some of the questions that we're being asked when we're out in the community. So I definitely appreciate being updated on that. And again, ordinarily, not in the weeds in that way, but obviously, we're in different times.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Paduza?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'd like to briefly follow up on that. And first off, thank Commissioner Lambert for calling this issue, for putting this issue on the agenda this morning. And Mayor, I just think in this type of situation, that communication is essential. And I would just ask that your administration continue to keep the Commissioners informed so that we may in turn then inform our constituents because we're getting, we're getting calls and we're getting inquiries. And I think that sometimes we're just as in the dark as they are. And I'm not blaming the administration because I think we are following the lead of other agencies. But anytime that you get information that you feel is important for all of our constituents, if you can just make sure that we have that information too, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Absolutely, and we're trying to use whatever platforms we have, whether it's social media, email blasts, et cetera. And I think we've got information going out at least twice a day. But certainly, we'll make a special point of getting that information to you Commissioners each time we do that, either with a text to let you know that there is an updated advisory that has gone out, so you can check your email, or if there's another suggested way that you want us to get information to you, let staff know so that you are as current as anyone else. But we're certainly sensitive to the need for communication of accurate facts and not rumors, innuendo. At this level, accuracy in truth is the best protocol. Commissioner Shoff?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for, you know, our first responders for putting this together, and Mayor, for your leadership. I think to your leadership credit, you've put together an excellent staff, having Chief Bloomfield, Chief Mooney, under the direction of Chief Outerly and Chief Matty, to really handle something like this, something we've never seen before. So I hope to see us, you know, take a more proactive approach in disseminating that information as we have been, and really taking the lead to make sure our citizens are safe. It's the hardest thing to encourage community being a part. And so I think that's the challenge that we find ourselves in. Looking at some of the things that we have for our citizens, I think it's clear to all of us here that this pandemic is going to leave those most vulnerable citizens in our society that are hanging by a thread further down the line. So I think it's a really great step, shifting a lot of emergency command over to first responders perhaps. It helps free up some staff to look at what can we do? Can we suspend any water shut-offs for our citizens to make sure that everybody has clean water in a place where they may have to be sequestered to their homes regardless of their status? And how can we help to try to address those, you know, childcare needs? And I think looping in those other agencies is a great way to do that and making sure that everyone has food supplies to the extent that we can. But I think keenly looking at those citizens that are on the verge, the moms and dads that are working two jobs, waitresses that are not getting tips, you know, those residents that I think were paycheck to paycheck, that now those paychecks are not going to come in. So how do we address that now? And also, while I know we're going to be expending a lot of energy making sure that we are addressing this changing situation, but always keeping that aftermath in mind so that if we can start to craft a plan for what this looks like afterwards, we're going to have businesses, small businesses, that haven't had business for an unforeseeable amount of time. So how do we start to address both the active situation we have in front of us? And if we can start to get a framework for a plan, I think that makes us more nimble after, just like any hurricane, after the storm passes, how quickly can we implement? So if we can start to look at some of those options going forward, I think it behooves all of us.
And that's a very good point, but keep in mind that our fiscal resources and I guess our legal capability is limited. And I'm very sensitive, and I agree with you that with our city having as much of a tourism component as part of its local economy, as significant of a role that tourism plays in our local economy, we are going to get, we, the city, and our local merchants are going to get hit in a significant way. The social distancing, that is the term of the day, is going to hit us hard. And I wish that we, as a city, could have a magic wand to, you know, make all of those problems, fiscal problems, go away, but we don't. And I think the best thing that we can do as a city is make sure that we are as current and as wired in with resources, whether they're state or federal, that we can direct to our merchants and our citizens. And so that's part of what we've been trying to do, is stay plugged in at the federal and state levels to see what resources may be flowing down. I know there is some legislation that the Senate's taking up today, which is going to be geared specifically toward, some, a portion of it will be geared specifically for, towards small businesses. And as soon as we have more information on that, when I was in Washington last week and had the occasion to speak to Representatives Hastings and Franco, as well as Senator Scott, the question was, how do we get the money from the feds on the front line the quickest? And was hoping that we could have a direct line as opposed to the money's having to be funneled through the state, which would add an additional waiting period. Didn't get a clear, concise answer, but the request was made and the interest is made that as those dollars are being allocated, we want them to hit the local level ASAP and not get hung up at the state. So we'll continue to work for that and to monitor that situation very closely. Commissioner Riles?
Yeah, I'd like to echo my colleague, Commissioner Shoff, with her concern. And mine is that in the event, and we've heard, and as you said, we can't rely on rumors, but we've heard that there very well may be a state of quarantine in the state. And should that happen, what are our steps going forward? And, you know, it's already been, Commissioner Shoff talked about the water bills, especially for the elderly and those that are living right at the poverty line or below. And what's our coordination with the school district? We do know that in our community, there are 75 students that are on, that are homeless and rely on those meals. And those people would likewise not be able to, those children would not be able to go to school and more than likely, don't have internet access. Can we coordinate with the school district to make sure that all those children within our district, that do not, within our city, that do not have internet access, aren't deprived of an education during this period of time? And so, I would likewise, you know, we have the resources to, we've heard about price gouging, and the city can very well have a hotline created in order to address price gouging so that in this time of emergency, our entrepreneurial friends don't decide to take advantage of those who are in most in need because that's precisely where most of the price gouging will occur. And so, if, you know, I would say that perhaps a hotline should be created so that we can have law enforcement address that in the event that it becomes a problem and we're in an extended period of coordinating.
And that's a very good idea, and that's probably part of the coordination that could go on at the county level. Chief Matty, where did she go? Oh, there she is. Where there's, because I know during the hurricane, we do have these price lines, I mean, the hotlines for price gouging, whether it's materials and gas and steam and stuff. Can you check with the county to see if they're going to have a similar type of
Absolutely.
...situation? And even if we can have, I mean, will we have dedicated dispatchers or a call center for this issue?
Typically, in the hurricane, we'll set up the call taker desk, and we transfer the 822 number from Utilities Dispatch over to the EOC, and we have call takers and that type of setup, and they go over the frequently asked questions and frequent answers. So I know that the county's getting their line set up today with that, their hotline as well. So that's something we have done in the past, and we can absolutely activate that too.
Okay.
I think it's important to point out, this is a long haul situation.
Yes.
We need to all be focused on this for, you know, longer than just the eight weeks the CDC is recommending. This is going to impact us for months to come, and we need to be really prepared to take this for the long game.
All right, Madam Attorney, you?
Certainly, I just wanted to, just for those who are listening, let them know that the Attorney General has established a price gouging hotline. The phone number is 1-866-966-7226. And certainly, we can take those calls when our emergency center is set up.
Can you repeat that number, please? Okay. Yeah, Madam President?
Thank you so much, Mayor. I just wanted to thank you, thank Chief Matty. I'm definitely supportive and grateful that we are going to enhance the EOC. And I just wanted to bring up again that if there is an opportunity to involve community leaders in this process, that they, you know, we have just a great resource within our city to help us. As you mentioned, we're in uncharted territories. I think that they could help with some efficiency in planning along the way.
Okay. Commissioner Shoff?
Thank you, Mayor. And just to clarify, because I think one of the main questions that I've heard is testing sites, and maybe I'm a bit preemptive on this, that may come out of the escalation of the EOC. But that will be something that we would be communicating out where, if you're feeling ill, you can go and get tested. I know we've had the first drive-through testing site open in Palm Beach County. So as that information is available, that's something that would be distributed through the EOC.
Yes, and certainly as part of our twice-daily advisories that go out, as soon as we get more information on testing sites, testing kit availability, et cetera, absolutely. Commissioner Paduza?
Thank you, Mayor. If Chief Matty could just briefly address the issue of our current EOC activation and anticipated activation, you know, should the need arise?
Sure. Currently, Chief Mooney, Chief Bloomfield, and one of our lieutenants has been, have been out at the EOC staffing, keeping close coordination. My EMS chief is on the front lines with the state medical directors and all of the My EMS chief is on the front lines with the state medical directors and all of the EMS providers, trying to make sure that we are in coordination with the hospitals and the other providers so that we're all functioning on the same page. So, you know, we've been, we've been doing this for, you know, we've been monitoring it, you know, for about a month and a half now. So, we've got a lot of plans in place that we have been waiting to execute based on guidance from federal and state leaders. So, now that we're at that point, we're going to start implementing a few more steps. Chief Bloomfield, as I said, was on a conference call and as soon as I get out of here, we're going to get that EOC fired up to the next level and get working towards switching the 822 number over and getting those staff in there to take those questions. And then, we can include those questions that come in, that we don't have an immediate answer for in those twice daily updates that Communications is putting out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Attorney, from a legislative standpoint, now I know that when we do have hurricanes, the city needs to adopt some kind of ordinance declaring a state of emergency. What do we need to do from a legislative standpoint to give us the fullest scope of powers possible in this situation?
What we normally do is the declaration of emergency, similar to what the governor did and similar to what Palm Beach County will do. Once you make your declaration, under the statute, we are given certain authorities and powers that makes it more easy to address the situation as the needs arise.
All right, can we get that into works?
Absolutely.
All right. And I assume we need commission approval?
No, that's a document that's signed by you, Mayor.
All right, okay. Well, let's expedite that and certainly as soon as I sign that, let the commissioners know that step has been taken. I'm sorry, I saw a hand somewhere. I think it was you, Shof. Shof?
No, thank you.
Madam President?
Thank you. Just final thing I wanted to say is thank you so much for considering that. And there's a lot of fear out there and there's a lot of unknown. And I think the number one thing we can do to help combat that is get information out there. So, whether, I don't think that there can be too much information as long as it's accurate and we can help disseminate that and get the information out, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Yeah, and again, I will repeat, Commissioners, if there is a preferred way of contact that, you know, whether it's text or email that you check frequently, let us know that so that we can reach you in a manner in which you can be notified as expeditiously as possible if it's something other than your city email or in addition to your city email. All right, Ms. Johnson, do you have anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. Anything else on this point? And again, thank you, Madam President, for bringing it up. And Commissioners, I just want to thank you in advance for all of your help. This is indeed an unusual, an unusual situation. But what I would tell you is that your stepping up to the plate as city leaders is so important during a time like this. Not going to get into a lot of politics, but I think you're finding out that you all, we all, are on the front line. And I think our citizens, our residents have, are looking to us, not necessarily to Tallahassee, not necessarily to Washington, to really help steer them, steer this city through the crisis. So, I appreciate your willingness to be there. As Chief Matty said, this is going to be a long-term situation. This is unlike anything that any of us have seen. We've, as a city, have gone through hurricanes and, but, you know, there's the ramp up to the storm and there's certainly the post-storm activities. We are probably going to be engaged in post-recovery activities for some time as a city. And it's going to be taxing on you as individuals with your families and your neighbors and your constituents, but they're going to be looking to you to remain knowledgeable and calm in this moment of crisis. And I thank you in advance because I know all of you are well capable of serving in that capacity. So, fasten your seat belts. Okay? Thank you. Next item, Westwood Linear Park, Gaines Park Maintenance and Upkeet. Commissioner Riles?
Thank you, Mayor. And the impetus for this request to be on the session today primarily came from my colleague Commissioner Peduzzi when he said that, you know, we want the park bond and I am fully supportive of the park bond. I don't even want anyone to think I'm not. But once we have a park, we have to maintain it and put the resources in it and have it operate as it was intended. The Westwood Linear Park was placed where it currently is probably about 20, 25 years ago. And there was a fountain in that, in that park that hasn't operated probably in about 10 years. And many of the residents around the area where the park was did not want it because they felt that it would be an attraction for criminal activity, which it has become. And the maintenance from the city would be substandard, which it has been. And so, I want to know what Parks and Rec is going to do and what its plans are and what its maintenance schedule is for the linear park. We had a citizen, one of my neighbors, come in at our last commission meeting who talked about the deplorable conditions at Gaines Park at the pool. And so, and he detailed them. That condition has existed for a number of years. And so, I'd like for Parks and Rec to give me some type of update on how they are going to address these issues and prevent them from occurring in the future.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mayor. Leah Rockwell, Director of Parks and Recreation. So, I'm going to start with Westwood Park. Westwood Park, over the past, I guess it was three or four years and about two years ago, had a total remake, total redo. And it was decided by many people that the actual waterfall fountain that you're referring to not be replaced because it was causing more issues with the quality of the water than actual, the upkeep of the fountain. However, the bubbler fountains were replaced. So, there was, there is an aeration fountain that is in there that currently has been operating. So, that was put in there and they had to go through a whole type of engineering, which I can't talk to because I'm not an engineer, in order to create a way in which the pump could continue to operate. Because it is a stormwater canal, there's a lot of muck and stuff that would get into that when the water levels dropped because it is a stormwater canal. And it would burn out the motors and they, it was, it was very difficult to keep that aeration fountain operational. So, they went through a whole, like two or three years of engineering to figure out how to get that aeration fountain operational. As far as the maintenance of the Westwood Park, there was all new plantings, irrigation, a myriad of things that went in there. So, what Public Utilities does is every two years, and they just are finishing up if they haven't already, re-pressure washing the walls of the canal. Because most stormwater canals don't have walls, but this does. So, they have to go in there, they have to pressure wash it. We, Parks and Recreation, pressure wash the sidewalks, the walkways every two years because we don't typically pressure walk sidewalks. But here we do because of the way that the sidewalks feed into the canal, it causes dirty sidewalks. So, we're in there every two years, pressure washing those sidewalks. The irrigation in that area has had challenges with the backflow valves. The handles on the backflow valves have been messed with by the community. And so, we have been, and so, there are times when we don't even know that the irrigation isn't working because the community who wants to do things in that area that shouldn't be going on turns it off so that they're not getting water on them from the irrigation system. So, we have come up with a way to remove those valve handles to, so we're going to change all that out. So, we just recently figured out how we're going to fix that element with people going in there and turning off the backflows, which turns off the irrigation, which then causes the plantings to be challenged. And we're also looking at changing some of the plantings because of the way that the water flows at that, in that area, the, we can't keep some of the plants alive. So, we're trying to put in a type of sod or turf instead of plants that aren't surviving in that environment. So, that's what we're looking on right now. But we are, we are constantly, constantly in there trying to maintain the graffiti and the litter. We're in there every day picking up litter. So, it's a, it's an area that is very challenging, but we are committed to keeping Westwood Park clean. So, switching to Gaines Park, is that good?
I just had a follow-up if I can, Mayor. I walked on Flagler yesterday and the benches all have these, they look like
Middle arms.
Arm, right. So, that people can't sleep out there because you know that that's going to happen. So, proactively, those benches were put there because you knew that there was going to be a certain problem and you made sure that you planned for that problem. Well, the community, I know for a fact, because I was one of them, knew that this would be a problem and dirt and trash and shopping carts and whatever was going to get into the water at the linear park. What can be done proactively to stop that so that, you know, you know when you're in an urban setting, sometimes that you have challenges that you don't have in other places? Did anybody put any thought and attention to, you know, thinking like people who do that kind of thing?
Well, I wasn't here when they, when they created the linear park. I was here when they finished it. The, what we've done is we've put cameras in the area to try and either deter or to try and catch those that are doing the illegal behavior or inappropriate behavior. But, you know, as, as they're throwing things in there, we're, we're trying our best to go and get it out. Typically, we have to bring a boat in, lower it into the, into the canal to then get all the stuff out of there and get it out of there. So, it's not, it's definitely one of our areas that we have to be more creative in how we try and maintain it. But, you know, as we put more cameras around, we're hoping that we can deter some of the behavior that's going on there and having the security company that's, you know, scheduled to make more trips around the linear park.
And do you have an idea when the cameras will be placed?
There are cameras currently there.
The additional ones you're talking about?
Um, no, we don't have a date on that.
Leah, at what point are we going to look at cost benefit? All right, if the, the cost of keeping this as a safe, attractive park, if you will, becomes so high that it outweighs the benefit, do we have a plan B? Because we could put all the cameras up that we want, but if no one's either looking at the cameras or we find that we're not able to catch the bad people and so we got to start sending boats in and whatever it is to keep this thing clean, is, maybe we need to reconsider whether this is the right approach with that space?
So, we have had discussions before we spent all the money, putting it back to, you know, putting in all plantings, upgrading the irrigation, fixing that, the aeration fountain. There were, there were discussions about enclosing the stormwater canal and making it more of a enclosed area, you know, I don't know if it's concreting it in or whatever it is, but enclosing it so it'd be more of an underground stormwater canal. But we never really went that way because at the time, the administration had given us the direction to bring it back to a prettier, greener park environment for the community.
Well, let's consider engaging the community in some conversations about the future of that. Apparently, Commissioner Riles was aware of and maybe even participated in some earlier conversations where this necessarily wasn't a direction in which many of the community wanted to proceed. We proceeded anyway and now they're looking like prophets apparently. So, let's see if we can engage them and get a better sense as to what it is that they would like to see so that we are now working with them and not at odds with them.
Just, can I just, for point of clarification?
Absolutely.
If you don't mind. Everything that we did to bring it up to its current standard were, was done not in a bubble. It was done with constant communication with the neighborhood, sustainability and Suzanne Bergland from Engineering, they went to the Neighborhood Association, I can't tell you, it probably was 30 different meetings throughout the two or three years of getting this back to where it needed to be despite all the other challenges that we have from the environment in which it's in. So, it was done based on what the community wanted, but certainly, we need to look at the cost benefit of it.
Commissioner Shof?
Thank you, Mayor. And thanks to Commissioner Riles for putting this on the agenda. I certainly want to defer to whatever the neighborhood would like to see, but I think, you know, if I hear the theme, it was to make sure that we're equitably distributing public assets. And perhaps if a park isn't the best use, maybe it turns into an AIPP project where it's still something that's nice, beneficial for the community, but functions better and is more easily maintainable. Again, that's me jumping the gun a little bit because I don't know what the community wants. But what I don't want us to say is, you either have a park or you have nothing. You know, perhaps there's an alternate course that we could take here that makes everybody a bit happier. So, thank you.
Okay, now Gaines Park.
Okay. So, Gaines Park, in reference to the comments that were made at the last commission meeting. So, I was at the pool deck. There is no mildew on the pool deck. The splash pad itself operates only when the pool is open and it's concrete. And the concrete is stained because we've got chlorine and a bunch of other stuff that goes on there. So, the pool deck gets pressure washed before the pool is back open for, back open. The pool is currently closed. It doesn't open until April 1st. So, the pool is only open right now for swim teams and not for general swim. So, when it opens April 1st, that pool deck gets pressure washed. So, there, there is no currently any mildew, nor will the Health Department allow us to operate the pool with mold or mildew on the property because they come in and they inspect our pool even when we're closed to make sure that it meets all of their standards. Secondly, about the crumbling wall, we have tried to use some plaster repair on that wall. And I don't know if you remember the list of Parks Bond items, the 1.25 million was specifically for that pool, that club, that pool house was built in the 60s and is in desperate need of being replaced. I don't think it should be a repair. I think it should be a replacement if we can afford it and do some other upgrades to the pool to make it more inviting to our community. So, so in reference to those issues, that's where we're at. But certainly, I'd be willing to answer any other questions.
Commissioner Riles, this was your
Commissioner, okay. Yeah, I, what I would say is that, well, my house is built in the 60s and it's not crumbling. So, what kind of maintenance schedule is occurring that allows the wall to get in a condition like that in the first place?
They've been trying to repair it. It's, it's, it just has deteriorated over the years. So, they have been trying to use a concrete patch and patches, because we didn't have the money to replace the wall completely. I can't tell you if a vehicle hit it or if a golf cart hit it, but it needed to be fixed and we were trying to patch it because we didn't have the 1.2 million to replace it as a part of the whole building rebuild.
And then, the other thing that the citizen mentioned was the canals having a bunch of debris in them. And I cut through there periodically and I can concur that that happened, so.
Yeah, I would have to coordinate with Public Utilities on cleaning the stormwater canals. Because we don't, we don't have boats to go in and clean the stormwater canals. But we'd be happy to do that.
Okay, can you look into that, please?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Shof?
Thank you. And thank you for, for being here today to talk about some of these issues. I think beyond what the resident was here discussing, there is a larger group of residents and friends of Gaines Park who are certainly very active at Gaines Park that have a number of concerns when it pertains to the actual building, which I know buildings were built in several in several iterations, going back as far as the 60s, so you're dealing with a lot of old buildings. And I don't know, Mayor, what the, the correct form is for this, if it's more of a, a neighborhood meeting, to try to talk about, A, some of the things that have been done, because I know, two years ago, when I went through Gaines Park, we were replacing air conditioning units and sections of roofs and things like that, but also pending the, the Parks Bond passing. And even without the Parks Bond passing, there's a number of, of, a pretty solid budget from the penny sales tax that's going into Gaines Park, but I think it behooves all of us to make sure it addresses items like leaking roofs, leaking windows, things that are, are aging infrastructure because of, of time, and I think there's a concern immediately about the, the safety of, of the building as far as mold, et cetera, and I think, if I'm not mistaken, we've done some air quality tests.
We've done several air quality tests, there's been, they've come back clean and healthy.
Okay, if, I think if, at the, the mayor's permission, if we could, you know, engage the neighborhood in some way, because, you know, I think what I want to communicate to the neighbors, friends of Gaines Park, the families who are using Gaines Park as after-school programs, that the building is safe and ready for occupancy, but also that with the significant funds that you're looking to dedicate to the building, that these issues are going to be further addressed, because I think there's some, I don't know what the right word is for, it's frustration that results in saying, let's just tear the whole building down and build a new one, and, and although we do have a significant renovation budget, we would never get the significant size of building out of that budget, and so I think that's important to just make everyone aware, and really address and make sure, you know, safety priority number one.
Absolutely.
We have a lot of kids, great park, we were out there on Saturday, had a great event for the Doc Horn Appreciation Day, and, and so certainly, a great place where all of our residents get to use.
So, the roof issue has been currently resolved. Leaks keep showing up in different places, and they're coming from different places, and we were trying to be good stewards of the taxpayer dollars we wanted to repair versus replace, because should the bond pass, we're going to have to put a brand-new roof on that is bigger than the current roof. So, for us to have put $100, $150,000 into replacing the roof last year, and then having to tear it out for the expansion, would really have been, it would have hurt us to spend that kind of money and then have it just be torn out. We'd rather use that money in other ways. So, we've been patching it, and because we are a licensed after-school program, the Health Department comes into the centers and they do inspections, and they check everything. So, they, they even, when roof tiles show any type of stains, we get fined for it. So, they're constantly in there checking everything to make sure that the environment is safe for our children in the city.
If I may follow up?
Yes.
And I think that kind of information is important, and I certainly understand that from a financial perspective, and I know we've done a lot of, a lot of engagement, but I don't think we can engage too much to re-engage the neighbors and make sure, you know, let them bring up their concerns, and make sure they know it's going to be addressed under renovation, so that way if they say, well, it's not going to do any good if we have a brand-new renovated building and the, the roof is still leaking, well, the roof is set to be replaced, and I think that, that will go a long way in trying to help everyone understand a bit better.
It has been stated, but we'd be happy to continue to state it over and over again.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else on Gaines Park?
No, no.
Okay. Thank you very much, Leah, and thank you, Commissioner Ross, for bringing this to the agenda. And you do have another item, drowning prevention outreach. Oh, okay.
And, and of course, I, I brought this up, it, it is top of mind to me. I'm currently involved in litigation over a three-year-old drowning, and African-Americans, unfortunately, are probably, have the highest rate of children drowning in the county for a host of reasons, some of them cultural. And having three grandchildren and three children, I, or they're children to me, they're all adults, parents who don't swim generally have children who don't swim, and fortunately, I have two children who are certified lifeguards, and so I wanted to know what was doing, what we were doing in order for outreach, what type of outreach we were doing in the city to make sure that the communities that are affected most by this tragedy know that there are funds available to teach swimming, and that they don't have to pay for the swimming lessons.
Okay. Again, Leah Rockwell, Director of Parks and Recreation. Good morning again. So, Warren Hawkins is a member of the Drowning Prevention Coalition. So, what I handed out to you guys is, I didn't have the actual flyer, so we printed one off, we have tons of them, but I just didn't have any at my desk. That is a flyer that the Drowning Prevention Coalition puts together, and they do over 200 presentations throughout Palm Beach County and the school system. So, they go to the schools and do over 200 presentations about the Drowning Prevention Coalition and their voucher program. So, they go to the schools, as well as South Florida Fair and other local big events, they're always out there educating the community about the Coalition and the voucher program, and we are one of their voucher pools. So, just to give you an idea, we had, last year, we had 266 participants just from the Coalition program, and then we taught over, let me find all of my statistics here. So, last year, in 2019, we had over 850 participants in our Learn to Swim program. That's up from the year before where we had 646, so that's a good 200 more swim lessons that we gave, and that's a 31% increase. Even though we target the whole community, most of our participants are African-American, about 75%. We do not track numbers, we do not track any of the demographics, but that's just how, at Gaines Park Pool, that seems to be the majority of our swimmers. So, for example, 486 participants out of the 646 were African-American, so we went back and looked at our records. Last year, we had additional swim classes to meet the demand, so especially during the summer months, because that's when we're open, we run at full capacity. That means lessons in the morning, in the evening, and during our after, during summer camp programs. So, I'm happy to hear that you have two kids that are certified lifeguards, if they don't have a job, we could use them. We don't, it's recruiting lifeguards and water safety instructors is very challenging right now. They, everybody across the country, it's a very difficult job to fill. So, with that, we can only teach as many based on the number of staff that we have. So, with our limited staff and our pool hours, we, we are booked solid with swim lessons, especially during the summer. At times, because our lessons are completely full, we have to refer them to other pools in the area like Barracuda Bay, the YMCA, or other pools, because we just only have so many hours of daylight that we can swim. So, other than the Drowning Coalition, we get five, we're hoping April 1st that we'll hear about getting our $5,000 from USA Swimming, and that goes towards, that supplement, that brings us up to close to the 850, where only about 300 are paid for through Drowning Coalition. So, we are out there, we are definitely out there, and our pool, especially during the summer, is teaching kids to swim. And, oh, and this year, I'm sorry, this year, Drowning Coalition is allowing, will have vouchers for adults and seniors, so we'll be able to also teach those that are not youth to swim, so if they get caught in a canal in their cars, that they'll be able to save themselves.
Any follow-up?
Yeah. Well, my question was, what is the city doing in terms of the, the outreach, and, and if you're relying on, you know, solely on drowning prevention, I understand, but I would suggest that a creative way to get children involved might be to engage with the library, because if, if it looks attractive, I, I'll put a personal experience, I, the Boy Scouts came to my elementary school, and they made it seem so cool that I bug, that I bugged my mother relentlessly until she took me to get in the Boy Scouts. Now, only lasted about three weeks, but-
[laughing]
But, I understand that a child can, you know, if it looks like it's going to be really, really fun, and we do have good outreach into the Northwest community especially, from the library, and collaborating with them to get the children, to get their parents to, over to the pool, I think would be a good thing.
So, we also have over, close to 500 kids in our after-school programs that we target, and during our summer camp programs, we have each session over 400 kids, 500 kids, that we offer our swim lessons to at, at a reduced rate. So, we are also marketing that way, just to let you know. We also do press releases through the Office of Communication, it's in our brochure, and it, and we're about to launch our, on the website, making it ADA accessible, all the swim lessons on the website, but we will look at going to the library as an additional. We also, the Salvation Army and the Boys and Girls Club, they all, they're all fully aware, so they're involved, yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shou, did you have your hand up?
Yeah. Thank you. As far as the staffing, could, if we had more certified lifeguards, could we provide more free lessons?
Yes, we would have to try and extend our hours. Our pool is, is lit for nighttime, so it would require staffing after our typical hours, but we, but we could. Finding them right now, we're, we've been trying to hire like crazy, so what we've put in place is like a lifeguard trainee step, so if we can get them in the door, and then we're going to, we'll train them on our dollar to become lifeguards. So, so we hire them as a trainee, we'll give them two to three weeks, we'll offer the class to get them certified, and then they have to get WSI certified, water safety instructor certified, to actually teach. So, we're working on it, and we did a recruitment for trainees, and still, nobody has applied. So, we're, we're trying to get it out there, we've been going to the colleges, the universities, we're actually trying to bring in some kids from our Youth Empowerment Center that are old enough, and training them. We have a few that are, that are takers, but it's a time where that age group is not really applying for jobs.
That is a seasonal job, is that correct?
It is a seasonal job.
Okay, thank you.
And Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Rockwell, I appreciate you mentioning the website, because as you were talking about this, I was on our website pulling it up, and, you know, just a, a general plug, I know that we're working on our website, and I know that there's a lot of hurdles to make sure that it is ADA compliant, but while I'm appreciative that the Drowning Prevention Coalition is getting this out, there's other services that are helping getting this out, I think probably the number one most-used phrase is "Google it," and if people are going to our website and they can't find it, you know, that's frustrating, and I know that a lot of times, we hear about, and we vote on items such as the funding for this just a few commission meetings ago, and then not be able to find it makes it difficult to get the word out, so thank you-
We're working on that.
-for doing that, I appreciate it.
Mm-hmm.
I'll raise that with communications and-
It's on our end. It's on the department's end, we're, we're trying to get it-
It's on your end?
Oh, yeah.
I was trying to help you out, but that's all-
I know, but I, I'm going to be honest, it's not, it's not their fault-
Okay, all right.
It's ours, we, we're trying to get the page built and get it through.
Thank you. Commissioner Shou.
One, one last question. You know, with our first responders, I know they do a number of, of training exercises with exiting vehicles, and, you know, a, a lot of lifes, lifesaving skills, perhaps they have resources available that would get us some lifeguard trainees.
What often happens is they steal our lifeguards to become firefighters. So, as much as we love, oh, they're not here, as much as, oh, Diana, it's right there, as much as we love our fire department, and the other fire departments in the county, typically lifeguards then progress to become either ENTs or, or firefighters, so we're thrilled that we can start a kid that's 17 or 18 and then progress to that type of career, but it puts us in a bind because we're constantly having to train, but, but thank you, we'll, we'll see if Diana has any retired firefighters that might want to come back and be lifeguards.
All the more reason to work together, it sounds like a great training program.
Yes, yes.
One last-
Commissioner Ross, yes, sure.
Could you please get me the solicitation for the young people that you're looking to make lifeguards, and-
Absolutely.
-so that I can disseminate it as well?
Yeah, we'll do.
Thank you.
Can you make it look cool for them? But, we need them more than three weeks, man.
Yeah, we'll do.
Anything else? All right, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Very much. Okay, Commissioner Budzi, Fire Rescue Station Eight staffing.
Thank you, Mayor. I did contact your city administration on Friday to let them know that I'd be willing to roll this onto another commission work session agenda. While I'm certainly interested in seeing that all of our fire stations are fully staffed, I also can appreciate how much our fire department probably has on its plate at this point, especially with EOC activation. I certainly want to have this conversation at another time if we don't do it today, or if we're not prepared to do it today, particularly with regard to the staffing of Stations Eight and Nine in our Western communities. As I understand it, those stations are at partial staffing because they're either-or at this point, and I just want to make sure that all of our residents have equal access to, to fire protection, and to make sure that everyone is, is safe in our city. But, as I said, I'm willing to roll it to another date.
You, you're not suggesting you have information that they aren't safe, are you?
Mayor, I, I'm looking forward in the future to the growth that's expected to happen in areas of our Western communities, and I am suggesting that having an either-or station where you can only have an engine or a rescue role, but not an engine and a rescue role, is a potential situation that could be unsafe. You can't even roll to a typical car accident without calling for another agency, agency to assist in most situations. A car, a simple car accident requires an engine and a rescue. Rescue personnel to transport patients that may require treatment at a hospital, and an engine to potentially extricate the people from the vehicle, or to contain any spills that may occur. So, I think that right now, we've got other agencies due to the closest unit dispatch and being a part of the county's dispatch system, but I think a city such as West Palm Beach should be in a position to take care of, of the situations that, that may arise with city, city resources not necessarily have to rely on other agencies for assistance.
Well, let's, I'd like to hear the data on that, and hear what our chief has to say. Are we prepared for this one, for, because I don't, oh, there she is. Chief Maddie, do you want to address staffing concerns, this issue?
Certainly, if I may, Station Nine is currently in a apartment complex out off of Haverhill Road, and the reason for opening Station Nine was the growth in the Western communities, so that started out in a strip mall, now we've moved into an apartment complex, and we are working on getting the temporary structure moved out there to some land off Roebuck and Haverhill. So, that's a couple of, maybe six months out there, to have the temporary, which is a trailer, and we will have a, a rescue truck running out there as we do now. Future plans for that include a permanent fire station, which, you know, as call volume grows and as the demand calls for it, we will be building the building to suit an engine and a rescue and, and, and other vehicles as, as needed, and also the ability to store things in the west if we do get a hurricane. That's another reason for having extra bays and fire stations. Station Eight was built the same, we now have a brick-and-mortar station, we were running out of a trailer for about 13, 14 years, and, excuse me, about 14 years, so we now have that brick-and-mortar station out west, we can accommodate that as there is growth in those Western communities. Does that answer kind of what you're getting at, or is there more?
Well, let me, let me ask a question. I mean, based upon your professional opinion, if we are, are the residents of the Western communities somehow at, at greater risk because of current staffing levels, listen, it'd be great if we didn't have to rely upon memorandum of understanding with other units, but the bottom line is the safety of our citizens, so in your profession- So in your professional opinion, are our citizens safe out there?
They are safe, but that is the fact that we are dependent upon other municipalities to backfill those 911 calls. As the commissioner stated, if we do have a major vehicle accident out on North Lake, Station Eight can get there with one of one truck, three people. But we also will have Palm Beach Gardens, Palm Beach County coming in, possibly even Riviera, depending on where it is, to enhance that. So it is not unusual in a more remote location like that to have to do to have to deal with longer response times, to have to deal with mutual aid coming in from different areas because that is a an area where it's covered by a bunch of different, whether it's county or other municipalities. Station Nine, there's a pocket of Palm Beach County that runs from there. We cover it from Fire Station Six on Cumberland. We also cover from Fire Station Seven on Okeechobee Boulevard. So that's kind of surrounded, but we put that truck in there to reduce those response times to that long stretch between Roebuck and 45th.
What other response times and what's the response time patterns over the last two or three days?
We're averaging lately in the past couple of years about six minutes and 34 seconds.
And how does that compare to other districts?
It's it's very good. It is very good compared to other areas. You know, Palm Beach County has a very large area and they have their numbers in the rural areas are, you know, it takes longer to get there, you know. And we have that that offsets our average. Our our numbers in the downtown are quite a bit faster, but we're right here at Fifth and Dixie. And, you know, we're able to get around the downtown where, you know, some of the longer stretches where if we're out of zone, if if Station Eight is not in zone, then we have to rely, the first due unit will be coming from Palm Beach County or Palm Beach Gardens. It's going to obviously take longer to get there. That's the first due unit availability. That's why we put that other truck at Fire Station Seven two years ago to reduce that period of time where that first due unit wasn't available to take that call in that zone.
Alright. Yes, Commissioner Budusi.
Thank you, Mayor. And just a brief follow-up, you know, I live, obviously, in those Western communities and
As do I.
Right. And more often than not, on the north side of our Western communities, because of the fact that we really only have one apparatus out there that can that can be available at any at any one time. You know, I see more of Palm Beach Gardens and Palm Beach County Fire Rescue in Ibis and on North Lake Boulevard than I do the city of West Palm Beach. And all I'm asking for is just to make sure that we continue that conversation in building our resources, our city resources, so that everyone can can be assured of proper fire coverage no matter where you live in the city.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shulz.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I think what I hear today, we have we have a brand-new fire station out west. So things are new and they take some time to scale up. And I'm sure, you know, from administration's side, they have a plan to scale up eventually. Is the question perhaps what that scale up looks like? Is it a short term or a long term? And I know that depends on budgeting and many other factors that go into it. But it sounds to me like that's the conversation. I mean, obviously, we want safe communities everywhere. The city has made a significant investment in a very nice state-of-the-art fire station. And I think the goal would be to staff that full-time the whole way around. But again, if it's if it's commonplace that inter-agencies would respond and and that's the standard, then that's the short term. And then is there a long-term plan to fully staff that? Is that a goal that's out there?
Yes, it's it's in our five-year strategic plan that we we published in 2018. So in our five-year plan, so we're looking at full staff in our strategic plan, obviously, our future growth. Fire Station Nine being fully staffed, Fire Station Eight being fully staffed, and EMS captain servicing the Western communities where we only have one for all of our stations. So it's a very busy truck that's an emergency medical supervisor that covers all of the shootings, stabbings, any sort of large-scale accident, any any major medical emergency. We have a captain that's highly trained that oversees the medics on that call. So we move them out to Fire Station Number Five, which is off Congress Avenue, to have better coverage for that person. As the call volume continues to grow, we will need another one of those. So we do have that all captured in our strategic plan and it is, you know, it's all, again, in my utopia, absolutely.
So it sounds like you have a scalable model in place so that as as time goes on and the growth occurs, that you'll provide more staffing as needed. And I think certainly we would all prefer sooner rather than later, but we do have limited resources. And so you can address that as it comes up to
And Commissioner, we do intend to apply for grants to get the new firefighters in the door so that we can train them in time for that growth. So we have to have them in the front door first because as it stands now, our existing staffing model will not support that without gobs of overtime.
Certainly, and certainly supportive of making sure you have the staff in place. Same but different conversation. I had a conversation with a resident in Riverwalk about an access road that was apparently gated but had access for the fire department that had some gates that weren't functioning that could potentially impact your your call time.
Yes, and our Assistant Chief of Administration has been working closely with them. My understanding is that the gate is constantly being manipulated by individuals who are passing through the driveway gate, pushing it open, so it's causing problems with the motor. And we've replaced it numerous times, but so it is an ongoing situation that we could probably easily resolve by just putting in a man gate to the side of the car gate.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions on this? Thank you, Chief, very much. Appreciate it. Okay, Banyan Boulevard MOT Plan, when?
Hi, good morning. Good morning, Wendy. So this is City Traffic Engineer for City of West Palm Beach. I'm here with Vladimir Juno. He is the project manager on this project. And we like to give everybody an update on this project. The last time we came in was in November for Face of the City. So it was approved and we spent the past few months finalizing our design, securing permits, working out all the maintenance of traffic and did a significant amount of coordination. So we're here to update everybody on what's the project status. So just as a reminder, the project limit that we were designing for is from Australian all the way to Flagler. It's about 1.25 miles. And we looked at it from a phasing aspect. So from at this point, we're only moving with to Phase One, which is approximately 0.7 miles from Australian to Rosemary. I'm sorry, to Quadrille. And then we're going to go through the details of this Phase One. Quick overview of the goal that we're trying to achieve. Ultimately, this project started about two years ago as we're planning and designing. And we looked at it from a underground infrastructure standpoint to upgrade not only our drainage, but our sewer and our water as well. And then, of course, a streetscape component of having lighting, landscaping, and signalization for access for all vehicles. Ultimately, this is the amount of outreach that we were we had and come up to this point. And here are a list of upcoming meetings that we have. We have Ms. Veronica Cooper. She is part of the project team and she's leading up all these efforts. If you have any details of this Vladimir, I believe that we also sent out over 500 mailers adjacent to the property or to the corridor. And we had a significant a significant amount of coordination, especially with Palm Beach County for as they are being affected by this project. So let's talk about maintenance of traffic. And I think this is something that the mayor and the city commission asked us to come back to talk in detail because this is our primary collector road that's coming into the city. And it serves about 18,000 trips a day. So we know that the majority of people coming into work and leaving work is using this Banyan Boulevard as an alternative to Okeechobee. So we're breaking it down to three phases, A, B, and C, or one, two, three. And then we're starting on the south side first and then we're going to shift traffic to the north. And then lastly, we're going to work on the middle section. And so with Phase One, and this is a detailed exhibit, we're going to be doing drainage and significant underground infrastructure itself on the south side first, maintaining two maintaining two lanes of traffic going to town. So we went through about three or four iterations before we finalized the design itself. The reason why we choose to keep two lanes coming into it's because of the morning demand. In the morning, everybody is going and and into work. And of course, we're taking a lot of consideration of the jury as we coordinate with Palm Beach County because it's going to affect that jury traffic. And in the afternoon, two lanes exit. So four lanes in this phase. There will be some case where we're going to be impacting the intersections. And the intersections are very difficult to manage, especially the intersection at Tamarind and Banyan itself because of the proximity to the railroad. We are dedicated to maintain access at all time, which means the majority of the time, we're going to be keeping four lanes active. But there are going to be some times that we have to maintain at least one lane in each direction. And what that means is because, again, we coordinated with Palm Tran and we have to maintain the access of Palm Tran in and out of this area as they're accessing the the ITC itself. So the outreach team is dedicated to, you know, keeping us not only working with our external communications at the city, but communicating with all the adjacent property holders, property owners along. We set up a hotline back in July and the hotline number is on available at 1-877-810-3044. It's 24/7. I believe we received some calls already for questions and comments during the design phase. And this is very crucial for us during construction because we're going to get a lot of inquiries and requests. So this is live and active today. So speaking about the intersection and we are going to be working at one corner at a time. If you can visualize that and still maintains. For example, where there are going to be some times that we're working on the south side of this intersection. And we can simply describe it as there will be one lane access north and south of Tamarind while maintaining four lanes east and west. And if you have any further details you like, we we'll be available to meet individually also. But ultimately, the concept is to maintain access at all time. And between Phase B and C, which you can see Phase B itself is actually to the right of the screen. I apologize if that is not clear. That we're moving to the north, very similar, and maintaining two lanes of traffic into the city. There'll be temporary asphalt already laid down. So it's a drivable surface and one lane going westbound exiting. Again, the the whole idea is ensuring that people can get to their destination in the morning. And in the afternoon, we tend to leave at different times, so it's dispersed. And then lastly, the Phase C, which is the construction in the middle, the impact would significantly be more between Tamarind and Sappidilla. And that's where the median is going to be at. But the section between Australian and Tamarind, it's really just paving for us. So it's just asphalt work. A lot of time asphalt work could be done very quickly within three or four days of worth of impact. So we just have to be mindful and paying attention to the middle section. The other thing that I failed to identify, and I'm actually going to go back a couple slides, is if you pay attention to where the 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 county garage is, right? And this is part of our coordination with Palm Beach County. Is that where that driveway right in front of our this employee parking garage is going to maintain at all time. So there's going to be times where we're going to have to work on the weekend or we're going to have to work at night. So that that access is open at all time. And that's some of the coordination and we change our design based on the coordination that we had. So it's not going to affect Quadrille. And so this intersection, Quadrille and Banyan, is going to still be open. So as far as access in and out of the city, there's also the Quadrille access also. And then ultimately, we've been, we bid the project because it is a C Mar. The project team bid the project. And right now, the bid that we had for the GMP, the Guaranteed Maximum Price, is approximately $15 million for this first phase. And then we our next steps is really going to go back to the city commission itself to to execute the agreement. But we are anticipating and going into construction in summer, early summer. We want to ensure that after season is died down quite a little bit before we start construction. But again, once we start, there'll be further outreach as we have our outreach team. We're here to answer any questions. We have the project team here also. And Vladimir has much more knowledge on the details of this project.
Not a question, but a comment. Commissioners, I will advise you to be prepared because no matter how good we try to be with anticipating the traffic needs, we will be getting complaints. But if you've driven down Banyan, you know that it needs a lot of TOC. So this is just something that has to be done. And no matter when we do it or how we do it, it will not be without complaint from others. And so your emails will be burning up and your phones will be ringing about how dare the city do what it's doing on Banyan. So prepare yourself. Commissioner Shulz.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks for the presentation and the update. Construction can be like that sometimes where it's it's really difficult, no matter what time of year you do it. I know there were some significant concerns from the county, of which I see you've met with them and continue to meet. And you brought up in your presentation, a lot of people that would be coming in for county business, like jury duty, et cetera. If we could perhaps meet with the county and have with their jury summons, then put a map in that gives them an alternate transportation. Have we put any thought into setting up signs to divert traffic down Clematis as it comes in down off of Tamarind? Or how how we can help to mitigate? I mean, obviously, we've accommodated for traffic full-time during the project on Banyan. But I think the the less capacity we can get diverted into other areas would be better.
Yeah, sure. And I think Vladimir can answer the detail as far as the jury summons because, yes, we have taken that into consideration. One thing I want to point out that we're going to start from the west, moving east. So the first phase that's you're going to see that's being impacted is really between Australian and Tamarind itself. But Vladimir, if you may.
Vladimir Juno, Project Special Project Manager for Engineering Department. And in meeting with the county, one of the person representatives there works with the jury system, Lieutenant McKing. And in our conversation, we talk about different ways that we can notify the jurors. We were even in consideration, talking to them to see how they can assist us, maybe putting wording in their summons that they're sending out to let them know that traffic will be impacted, that, you know, to plan for that. Also, we're planning to use Waze to upload all the blockage that that will happen, the closures, to say, that will happen so that they anybody coming downtown can plan for those events. And also Quadrille will be open. That's another way that, you know, they can enter to the city. And also, we prefer everyone to 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 Fern, to Quadrille, coming into the courthouse.
And and so we'll handle this two-phased one, the the regular commuters, to get them diverted into Fern. And once they get that into their routine, it should pretty much stick. And then two, those who don't visit the downtown frequently and are just looking for a map. Am I understanding what you're saying is you have the ability to communicate with Waze so that Waze would put the preferred direction downtown automatically in their map to divert down Fern?
Yes, and our community Communications Department is already doing it right now because Waze is owned by Google. So right now, if you pull up Waze, you'll see where the obstructions are at within downtown.
Very nice.
Any other questions? Yes?
Thank you so much for your presentation. I'm just keeping with the theme that I've said for every item so far, knowledge is power. And so I think it's awesome that we're utilizing Waze. I think that for those people who use that, I think that's wonderful. I appreciate the hotline. Where are we disseminating this hotline? How will people know to call that hotline?
So the hotline, every time we have a community meeting, we mention it to them. Also, we give them note cards and flowers that have the hotline on it. And we encourage them to use it, to to call us, to communicate with us. And by doing so, we will be in turn effective in responding to their comments.
Okay, great. And and Mayor, if if our communications team has the capacity, if And Mayor, if our communications team has the capacity, if, you know, you, if our engineering staff can do this, I, you know, I really appreciate that on social media, we're now posting, I think, once a week, any road closures. But if there's road closures that are attached to a long-term project like this, where we could have updates as to the dates that the south lanes will be closed, the dates that they'll open, because oftentimes, as you mentioned, we're going to hear it, and we're going to say, they've been closed for three years, they've been closed for this amount of time. And if we have the information, I just think knowledge is power.
Yeah. One of the things that we started internally is we have a working calendar that I'd be happy to share with everybody in this group, is as any given day, it's, this is staff-initiated internal calendar, that you'll see all the closure in the city. And that's how we can communicate internally more efficiently, with the tools that we have. But ultimately, yes, you know, I think the communications team did a really amazing job notifying on Sunday, right before, because you tend to forget before the weekend's over, of all the road obstruction. So we have constant communication on this.
And we will ensure that they continue to be beefed up as we get closer. Anything else? Okay, thank you.
I do have another question.
Really?
Sorry. You didn't dismiss us yet.
No, but I looked around and asked for, okay, come on.
I was just going to commend you, you know, along the same lines that Commissioner Shou mentioned about working with the county, because obviously, we heard from them, not only, I think, at the previous work session or commission meeting, but I'm sure we've all heard from them individually as well. I would just ask that if future concerns come up, that you think, you know, are heavy, are very important to other stakeholders, whether it be the county or whomever, that you let us, if you could let us know ahead of time, what those concerns are and how we're mitigating them. That would help us then, when we hear those concerns, to be able to answer them as well.
Excellent point.
Thank you, Mayor.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, I think you still are going to hear from the county regarding this project. I mean, if you want to get a heads up on that. Now, as I understand it, the county is still requesting, rather, that all of the work be performed at night. And staff has looked into that and determined that it is economically infeasible to do the work, just from a cost standpoint. From my understanding, the county still has some concerns with the design of the project, rather it falls on the side of being a road diet. And our perspective on it is that it's road narrowing. So I think you still have a difference of opinion there, and you may hear that as well. So I don't want the commission to expect that the county may not weigh in on this, in spite of all of the coordination that has been done. I think you should be prepared that you may hear from the county prior to your March 23rd meeting, or you may have a representative from the county to come to speak on it at your March 23rd meeting.
If I may add to that, we actually, the project team, looked at night construction, and we determined that the cost of the project would be doubled based on the complexity of obtaining materials and of staffing. The other thing that I wanted to point out, that, you know, we at the city refer to FHWA for the term of road diet, and what that definition is. As far as the travel lane, we, the design itself, and this goes back to November, we talked about ten foot on the inside and eleven foot on the outside. Eleven feet is the same width that I-95 travel lane is, so we feel that it's safe. The other thing that I have to commend Vladimir and his team is, we actually met with the fire department, and not only coordinate the design, but coordinate the MOT and the different phasing during construction. Because, you know, as we speak earlier, fire rescue and life safety is important as we maintain, manage this project.
Great, thank you. Yes, we are continuing to try to play well in the sandbox with the county. Thank you very much. And on that note, let me talk about the golf course for a minute, and give you an update. I did have a very productive meeting with Seth Wall, who is head of the PGA. I think it followed up on your community meeting with Mr. Wall, and what we agreed, the PGA is very, very interested in moving forward with the improvement of our golf course, construction of a community center, and all of this without any real estate development, et cetera. So it is appearing that it is a very unique opportunity. Indeed, it may be the unicorn that we thought was out there that could be valuable. So where we left it is Mr. Wall and I, on the behalf of the city, entered into a handshake agreement, which we will document with a letter of intent, hopefully this week, getting out. I'm looking at my city attorney. But we will give them an exclusive period of time in which to raise the money that they need. And I think that time is in the fifteen-month timeframe. And I'm willing to do this, and I think it's good for the city, because to have a partner of the caliber of the PGA, interested in investing in our golf course, and part of the discussion was they would actually locate a, an administrative building in the facility with the PGA sign on it. It won't be the national PGA, but I think they have regional offices of the PGA that they want to locate there. They've walked the course, they've done the due diligence, they've walked it with who they're perceiving as their primary benefactor. They didn't tell us who the name was. That person has walked it with a couple of architects, golf architects, golf course architects. So there is an extreme amount of interest, and they are very excited about it. But they need a document that they can walk around to their potential investors, and so we're working on a letter of intent, which is an agreement to agree. We're not negotiating yet the final terms of the lease. There'll be leasing the space, long-term lease, probably fifty to ninety-nine years for a designated amount. So that is the status. We're pretty, we're very, very, I'm very excited about it. I think this could really be what we've been waiting on and working on for so many years. And again, I'm confident in the caliber of the partner that we're bringing to the table, i.e. the PGA. So that's where we are. And again, it's exclusive for a fifteen-month period of time to get everything lined up, and I'm confident that it can be done. I'm happy to answer any questions. Yes, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. That's definitely very exciting. I appreciate hearing some progress on the golf course, and had a great community outreach meeting just a few weeks ago. Over two hundred residents and stakeholders were there. Definitely, there seemed to be great support for PGA. While he did not present a project specifically, you know, he talked about the general concept. My, I am appreciative that we're allowing them the time that they feel that they need to raise the funds. My request would be, are there some benchmarks that they might be able to meet within those fifteen months, that maybe in your negotiations or discussions with them, that could show us that they're working towards that, so that at the end of fifteen months, they don't come to us and say, sorry, we can't do it? I hope that that wouldn't happen. And then the second thing, that I just was curious if we could see the results of the community outreach that was done on this? And if that was shared with PGA as well?
You mean the poll that we took?
Correct.
Yeah, we'll get that information. Is that finalized, Mr. Fana?
Armando Fana, Assistant City Administrator. Yes, that poll has been finalized. We had over five hundred respondents, and when we'll show you the results, you'll see that a majority would have headed in this direction anyway.
Okay. And so maybe we could do that at a workshop, but if you want to make a rounds, particularly with the district commissioner, and share that, but a broader discussion we can have at the...
Yeah, and we'll send it out this week.
Yeah, and no, we didn't share that with the PGA. I know they have their own ideas, and so obviously, we will share it with them now that it's been finalized.
Thank you.
But the benchmarks question, yes, that did come up, and we will try to fold those into the letter of intent. During this fifteen-month period, we will take advantage of the time to also negotiate the terms of the lease. So it's not as if we're just going to sit around, and then they come up with the money, and then we start those negotiations. So we will take advantage of the time to start working through some of the details on the lease. Follow-up, and then Commissioner Baduzy.
Thank you. Just my follow-up is, I appreciate that we're working on the lease agreement at the same time. I don't know where we are with the titles of some of the parcels of the land, but obviously, hopeful that we're working on that as well, if that's not already solidified.
Yes, we are working on it. That's why I drew that connection between Banyan and the titles. But yes, we are in conversations. We thought we were very close to a deal with the county, but we will get that worked out. I'm confident we'll get that worked out, even in that fifteen-month period.
Thank you, Mayor.
With no small amount of pain. But anyway, Commissioner Baduzy.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say for the record, I'm a huge proponent of partnering with the PGA. I think this could bring, it has tremendous potential for the residents of our city, and I'd like to thank you for taking decisive action on the matter. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Shou.
Thank you, and thank you for the update. I'm certainly in favor of moving forward with the renovations and redevelopment of the golf course, and have heard a lot of really good feedback. I guess the bind that I'm putting in here is that I have not met with PGA. I have not heard from them what their plan is, what the details are. And so it kind of puts me in a bad spot, when I have neighbors coming in and lobbying me to go with this plan, when I don't know what the plan is. So I think if we could, it's easily remedied, I hold no ego in it, if we could, you know, perhaps have a little bit more information, because I'm certainly excited and want things to move forward, but it's difficult to know what the plan is at this moment to move forward with.
Well, keep in mind that there is no final plan yet. What we're doing is agreeing to agree on a period of time. And so what they, and they will have some general generic description that will be a part of the letter of intent, but it won't have all of the i's dotted and t's crossed. But the agreement at this point is simply to give them an exclusive period of time in which to negotiate funding, and then bring back to us a more detailed plan. So as soon as we, as soon as they develop a more detailed plan, that will be brought to you. And obviously, the lease itself is going to require the approval of the golf commission, which you all, we all sit on.
Certainly, and again, I'm in favor of trying to make sure we're getting plans together, but as part of this governing body that's going to make a decision down the road, it would be nice to meet and know the plan before we know even what plans we're trying to get into. For instance, I have hearsay about what would or would not be involved in that agreement. So it's just, I think, point of clarification. Perhaps someone from PGA could reach out to commission staff, make appointments with us, as many developers do. Again, I'm speaking as one person on this day, so I know, certainly great visiting the district commissioner. I'm really very supportive of getting out and getting neighborhood input. We can never have too much neighborhood and community input, but I think one of the pieces that's lost in there, at least for one-fifth of this commission, is a meeting with the commissioners.
Well, I will certainly mention to them that at the appropriate time, they do come sit down and meet with you, and if they think that's now or later, I'll leave that to them as to when they want to, how much they want to disclose, and how much they have already evolved. But I don't think that there is any desire to move too far ahead without having those one-on-one meetings, but I will certainly mention that to them.
Thank you.
Commissioner Nair.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll just mention that I did sit down with PGA commissioner, they did reach out to me, I guess maybe a month, a month and a half ago, and so I don't know if that means anything, but they were willing to talk about what their future plans included, which I think the broader piece of it for me was the, the unique way in which they were coming at this as compared to many other folks. So obviously, not details in terms of what the eighteenth hole will look like, eighteenth hole, rather, but more so that they felt like they could raise the funds to be able to do it, and talked about some other things. So I just mentioned that, just parenthetically, for whatever that means. And then just two quick comments. One, I agree, and I like the idea of the benchmarks. And Mayor, to your point, continuing to kind of work out as much as we can between now and the fifteen months. I mean, I do see this as a legacy project for this commission, this administration, something that we have. When I came on the commission five years ago, and the clubhouse had been torn down, still feel somewhat like we're kind of in that rut, but I actually feel like there is light at the end of the tunnel. But I will say, whatever we can do to expedite it, but obviously expedite it in a way that is a generational decision, meaning one that not just five years from now, but ten, fifteen, twenty-five years from now, will still be a vibrant part to our community. So, thanks.
And part of the thinking, just so I could state it, for kind of the, the length of the time is, apparently, many of the donors they are approaching are seasonal residents. So they've got to try to factor in their requests when people are around during the season. So since we're about halfway through, probably just a couple of months away from the end of this season, then they're probably going to be making a real heavy push, I would imagine, in November of next year. So they just needed to have some time. But they're very optimistic about getting this done. As I said, they've got one significant benefactor in mind, who has already walked the course with his or her preferred architect, golf course architects, and so I'm very confident that we'll get there. Any other? Yeah, Commissioner Shou.
Thank you, Mayor. If I just may clarify, I think having a name like PGA associated with the city of West Palm Beach is definitely a step forward. I'm supportive of moving it forward. I just want to set the baseline for what our communications will be going forward. This is a significant partnership, and it's something I think that would be amazing for our South End. Don't want to slow it down at all, but would like to set the baseline for an open communication dialogue.
Understood. Anything else? And then the only other thing I have is tomorrow's election day, and I'm hoping that turnout will be, will not be adversely affected by some of the incidents going on. And really optimistic, hopeful about our parks bond, and I've hopefully got enough education out to the community. I just want to make sure education outreach was significant enough, is all I can say. Anything else, Commissioners? Yes, Madam President.
Thank you. Just in thinking about, as you meet with Ms. Johnson about moving forward with our meetings and city business, just if we continue to meet as a body, that we make sure we communicate with the public, the link where they can participate, and think about creative ways that they might still be able to participate in public comment, or give feedback, even if they're not here in person, for consideration.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.